That's right. Leading up to professional registration will now come to order. Please read the -- please take the roll. Representatives Elmer?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Barr? Brown?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Cornejo? Frager?
Here.
Frame? Franklin?
Here.
Frederick?
Here.
Henson?
Here.
Keeney? Crackie?
Here.
Len?
Lamp?
Here.
Lithonager? Mayfield?
Here.
McCandidi?
Here.
Moon? Muntzle? Nichols?
Present.
Peters? Rhodes? Swan? Swerengin?
Here.
Walton Gray? Having established the quorum, we will begin with opening a public hearing on House Bill 1481 sponsored by Representative Roland. Colonel Penny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, committee. For the record, my name is Lael Roland. I represent the 155th District in the state of Missouri. House Bill 1481, if you have looked at it, there's five pages, but actually of the five pages, there's only very few words that are in dark print. There's some that has been taken out, so it's probably just a simple little bill. You may have heard that in the past. Two years ago, I had a constituent of mine in the town of Theodosia, Missouri, come to me. They were trying to put a little help plan together for that area. And we kept running into a lot of roadblocks with that. And this bill, as being proposed today, would help eliminate some of those roadblocks. The 50-mile radius for a collaborating doctor is, in this day and age, I feel like, is just wrong. And that is something that we have taken out in this bill. We have technology. We just attended a session last night with school superintendents and the technology that's in our school districts and what they're capable of doing in educating. I think we can do the same thing in the medical field. I have several things with this particular bill that I have lots of witnesses. And at this point, I would entertain any questions that you would have of me right now, or we can start with the testimony from some of the witnesses.
Are there any questions for Representative Roland? Mr. Representative Frank? Nichols, sorry.
Could you list for us exactly what changes this bill is going to make?
You know, I have probably one of my more expert witnesses to do a better job of that, Representative. If you would allow me to call in and then go forward.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Patricia Stone. I am a nurse practitioner. Been practicing as a nurse practitioner for approximately 15 years. Before that, I was a registered nurse. Became a registered nurse right out of high school, so it's been a long time. And I'm here testifying in support of House Bill 1481, which specifically will address elimination of the geographic road limits between the physician and nurse practitioner, collaborating physician and nurse practitioner, and eliminate joint rule promulgation between the Board of Healing Arts and the Board of Nursing. And specifically what that means is currently, right now, nurse practitioners report solely to the Board of Nursing. But in certain areas, the physician, the Board of Healing Arts and the Board of Nursing are expected to promulgate rules together. And this will put responsibility solely on the Board of Nursing. And I wanted to begin by talking about, basically about our Missouri citizens. One of the five Missouri citizens now cannot have really serious problems accessing healthcare. And whether you support Medicaid expansion or don't support Medicaid expansion, the problem is not going to get any easier. These people, our citizens, our people have no place to go. And it's just going to get progressively worse. You know, health statistics--
Excuse me. Stephen, let me interrupt. Could you use the microphone? Some people out there may have difficulty.
Sorry. You know, all statistics support the fact that if you don't have access to healthcare, the healthcare status of your people go down. And Missouri currently ranks 39th in the nation as far as helping of our people. And so, we need to do something about it. And the problem in Missouri is that we have so many restrictions against more than 4,000 nurse practitioners or more than 6,000 ambac practitioners in the state of Missouri for patients to access their care. We have rules and regulations and statutes that were created over 20 years ago that are completely outdated and serve no purpose. They are not based upon sound evidence. They are not based upon quality. And they create a hindrance for people to access healthcare. And I created a chart, and I think maybe you have it. Have you received this?
Yes, Miss.
Okay. Which basically goes through some of the unique restrictions that Missouri collaborative physicians and nurse practitioners face, that none of our bordering states face. And it's not like these restrictions help to improve the health of our patients, help decrease the cost of care, or improve access. It's not like all of our bordering states that do not have these restrictions, their patients are not dying off because they have these restrictions. But in fact, it creates hindrance for our people here. So, for example, the 50, 30, 50-mile road limit. What that means basically is that if a nurse practitioner and a physician are practicing at two different sites, two different locations, trying to improve access to care, trying to bring healthcare better to the people, if they're practicing in an urban area and that physician steps 30 and 1/2 miles away from the nurse practitioner, all healthcare stays. So, any patient that typically would go see that nurse practitioner now has to travel someplace else, see maybe a provider they're not familiar with, you know, drive anywhere, go to the E or go to the urgent care, but the healthcare has to stop. If you work in an underserved area and the physician steps out that 50-mile road mile, again, healthcare has to stop. And 50 miles is nothing when you're talking about rural healthcare. And so, you know, it doesn't improve access to healthcare. It does actually no good as far as giving care to the patients, and it increases the cost of care because the patient has to go somewhere else. It's outdated also because today, we have electronic medical records. You can pull up, I work in orthopedics. You can pull up, you know, my surgeon can pull up an X-ray, the same X-ray that I'm looking at in my office. He can see everything I'm charting. You can see things electronically now. And so, the fact that you have a distance between a physician and a practicing nurse practitioner, what good does it serve? If a nurse practitioner is taking care of a patient that needs care immediately, they're not going to wait for a physician to drive 30 miles or 50 miles to their office. If they did, they would be guilty of malpractice. Instead, they're going to get that physician on the phone, or they're going to send that patient to the ER, call 911. And so, I'm asking you to take a look at these, all these rules and regulations that we have. And as you can see, none of our other states have them. And reconsider how we can decrease the cost of care and improve access to care and quit providing healthcare based upon, you know, we're trying to provide healthcare based upon our children's technology, but we're trying to provide it based upon our grandparents' rules. And it's time to think about what's best for our people and what's the best way we can deliver maximizing, you know, use of all of our providers and decreasing the cost of care. Questions? Thank you.
Questions for this witness? See none? Thank you.
Representative Nichols did answer your question. We will have other witnesses, and we'll follow up at the end. I'll close with some comments. We'll probably get those questions then.
My name is Joanne Franklin. I've been a nurse practitioner in Missouri since 1977. I am a family, a geriatric and psychiatric nurse practitioner, and a physician. I have a doctorate in nursing practice. I would like you to imagine your daughter, or your wife, or your sister going to a nurse practitioner with a complaint that she has a yeast induction. So, she goes in and the nurse practitioner says, "Well, with this yeast induction, I think that you say that it's been recurrent. We need to do some lab work to be able to look and see if you have diabetes." So, the lab work is done, and the patient has already paid a co-pay to see you, and they've traveled 40 miles to your rural health clinic. With the lab work, it's determined that that person does have diabetes. So, they're given an exercise program, a diet, and in addition to that, they're also given oral medication because the lab work is significant. Then, you tell the patient that you're going to have to go see the collaborative physician that I work with within the next two weeks because this is a new diagnosis. And that's when the rule that is changed. So, you call the collaborative physician's office, and you say, "We need an appointment for a new patient in the next two weeks because they have a new diagnosis." And they say, "We have no appointment for the new patient." So, you tell the patient this, and they're worried about having to pay another co-pay, drive another 40 miles to that office to be evaluated. And they're also worried that there could be new medications or new lab work ordered. And so, it's a significant burden. There's not equity in care between a nurse practitioner seeing someone and a physician. The patient would have extra added expense if additional labs or medications were ordered in addition to the co-pay, in addition to the travel time. I've worked in Missouri since 1994. I actually had a clinic that had to be closed because my collaborative physician moved out of the area because he received his J-1 visa and was no longer interested in being there. I live in one of the poorest counties in the state. So, some of these rules are so antiquated. And a physician is supposed to come and sign our records every two weeks. So, they have to close their practice, travel 50 miles each way in order to come sign charts, which doesn't impact point of care. It doesn't make that patient any better. But if I have a patient who has an issue, I can take a picture at that site or send something that's significant to them so that it is impact at point of care. And that person then can have a better outcome. So, these rules that we have that are so old, that are burdensome, just impact the access to care. And Missouri's ranked 36th as far as access to care in the state.
Any questions for this witness?
Yes.
Representative Swartman?
Mr. Swartman?
See?
So, tell us then, how should it happen? You told us how it happens now, but you don't like the way that it's happening now. So, this bill passes? These rules are changed? Then what happens to a patient? And when is he going to see a doctor? When is he going to see you? Tell me how it should work.
Patients have the right to choose what provider they would like to have. And by sending them to a collaborative physician that they have no relationship with, they find that to be a burden. So, it's not going to change the level of care that's given. The patients will still be able to go wherever they want, but they won't have to report to a doctor within two weeks. That physician doesn't have to drive two hours round trip in order to come sign records that could be done electronically. The patient's still going to get care. If that patient needs more care, my collaborative physician has the same scope of practice that I do. So, if I'm going to send that patient to a particular person, I probably would send them to an endocrinologist or a specialist for diabetes, not that to someone who's going to give more of the same. So, that's one way that it would be different. It would also save the patient money for travel time. It would save money on co-pays, and it would save the stress of them having to go to another appointment within two weeks when they have to take off work or whatever involvement that would take.
Well, how about answering this then?
Okay.
Why is that okay? Why is it okay for the nurse to see you and not see a doctor in two weeks? Or not have the doctor come review your records?
The doctor can review my records, and he can do it electronically. And as was said previously, if there's an X-ray or lab work, it can be scanned and sent at point of care. I'm telling you that if a doctor comes two weeks later to sign my chart, it's just really a burdensome thing. The doctor leaves their office for an hour to come do that, so they have lack of patient care. We have a huge access problem. We need to be able to allow people access. And so, by tying up that physician to do that, when he can do it electronically from where he is or see the same things that I can see at the point of care, that's what's going to change. Outcome and evidence-based practice will be effective then instead of, you know, it not being done for two weeks. When they review charts, it never makes an effect. If I give someone an antibiotic for two weeks, and they come in two weeks later and they look at my chart, that's not going to make a difference in outcomes. It's not going to make a difference in patient care.
So, what you're saying is that you can do everything that you're doing now with wheels on the road. You can do the technology.
Absolutely.
Different ways of getting the same information that you used to have to drive to go see this chart. Now, you can do it through cyberspace.
Absolutely.
Are you, does any of this expand your scope of practice? Are you trying to do more things than you should be able to do as--
No. We all work within our scope of practice, and our collaborative physician is there if we need anything. But it doesn't change how we practice at all. It just gets rid of problems that cause access problems for patients.
Thank you very much.
Representative Frager?
Good call, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Thank you. Okay. I think to follow up on Representative Nichols' question, the sheet here that we've been given, like you said, there are all the points were on the sheet. We could, let's go over them real quick, because I think there's still some questions we'd like to have answered. So, the first topic here is that the collaborating physician is required to assess, diagnose, and treat. With this legislation, now, that's the way it is. That would go away. Is that correct?
The, your question is, would people would be assessed, diagnosed, and treated? I'm not sure what you're asking.
Again, I can answer. So, with the first one, no. This has not changed collaborative practice agreements. That would still stay the same.
Okay.
The second one would still stay the same. The third one would change. It would eliminate the road miles. The physician would still be required to review charts. However, there would not be a distance where if the physician traveled outside the 30 or 50-mile radius, the nurse practitioner could still see the patient. The first, the next one, one physician to three APR ratio would not change. The fourth one, all patients must be referred back to the collaborating physician. That would depend upon the joint rule promulgation, because in this bill, it does state that all rules that were promulgated prior to August 2014 will be null and void. So, this would allow the nurse practitioner to refer back to the collaborating physician if the collaborating physician wanted that patient to be referred back. But say the nurse practitioner was taking care of a patient, you know, did a visual exam and find out that the patient's having a retinal detachment. That nurse practitioner would have the ability to refer that patient to an ophthalmologist, and it would be up to the ophthalmologist to say when he needs to come back to be visualized for his eyes. Or say the nurse practitioner newly diagnosed a patient because she's pregnant. That nurse practitioner could refer that patient to an obstetrician, but that patient wouldn't have to come back now and see the collaborating physician again who was a primary care provider. Physician must examine patients within two weeks after being treated by the nurse practitioner. Again, this is in the rules. So, if the rules will null and void, that would not necessarily be true. The decision will be made by the nurse practitioner and the collaborating physician if that patient needed to come back and see the collaborating physician. Or say you're in a walk-in clinic, that patient may not want to go back and see the collaborating physician. That patient may have their own physician who isn't open on Sunday. So, that patient wants to see their own primary care provider. The physician must review a specified percentage of APR and services would not change. It would just allow it to take place via electronic communication or having the physician review the electronic records from wherever he or she is. He could be at his house and pull up the chart and see everything that the nurse practitioner did, could visualize the X-rays, could see the lab reports. Physician must be onsite at the practice location every two weeks. I'm sorry, skip one. That the APR must practice at the same location as the physician for one month. That would not change, although it should. Physician must be onsite at the APR and practice every two weeks if the APR is diagnosing a two-year chronically ill patient. Again, that's in rules. And so, that could go away, and it should, because again, that decision should be made based upon patient care and based upon what the patient needs. Maybe the patient doesn't need to come back in two weeks because it's just going to increase the cost of care, and nothing's going to change. APR and receives license to practice, that's not in this bill, and the state board has sole authority of room making, is not in this bill. Does that make sense?
That helps a bunch. Thank you. Now, on the prescriptions, nothing changes on prescriptions at all?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Representative Frager?
Good call, Mr. Chairman.
See?
Am I done?
No.
Do either of you, let me ask both of you. Do you feel that you're sufficiently supported by your collaborating physician?
Completely.
It sounds as though the only function that you notice from your collaborating physician is that he comes, he or she comes to the clinic every two weeks and just signs your charts. Do you have face-to-face review? Do you discuss cases?
Absolutely. If there are any issues of someone that I have concerns about, that's the first person that I contact, and usually while that person is there. So, it can impact care while that person is there. But I certainly rely on that expertise of the physician that I work with, and I have a genuine respect for them, and they do for me as well.
So, there is some value to having a direct face-to-face with your doctor at the time of care?
There, if there are issues with someone, then it does have value, of course.
Do you feel like you're, let me ask the question to the other witness. Do you feel like you're sufficiently supported by your physician, and does he interact and support your practice?
Yes. Actually, in my practice, the physician is there most of the time. Many times, he's in surgery and I'm in the clinic. So, if I see a patient that comes in with a new fracture, or if a prosthesis looks like it's loosening, or I aspirate a knee joint and it comes back looking pretty turbulent, the physician can pull anything. I'm seeing in my X-ray up wherever he or she is if he's in the OR.
So, you can, well, we're in a situation now where you have pretty ready access to your physician when you're seeing patients. It's a little different than the situation we're describing when you're 50 miles out there and you're just doing it all electronically.
Well, the 50-mile rule really is a hindrance when a physician leaves. So, now, there's a rule that says for 28 days out of the year, it's okay for a physician to be out of the 50-mile radius.
Yes, yes. We adjusted that last year. You had mentioned earlier that you felt that the scope of practice of your collaborating physician was the same scope of practice that you had.
What I mean by that is the law reads that you have to work with someone in a similar scope. So, I have family geriatric and psychiatric background, so I have to have a physician do either family practice, a psychiatrist, or a geriatricologist.
I'm very familiar with that. But you gave the impression that you felt as though there's nothing further that your collaborating physician could add in the case of a patient that you've already evaluated and treated. So, if you were going to make a referral, you wouldn't send the patient back to your collaborating physician, because he's basically the same as you are. You're going to send it to a subspecialist. Did I read that right?
I think that if I were to contact my physician about someone that I was going to send to a specialist, they would be in agreement that it would be appropriate to send them to cardiology, or nephrology, or neurology, rather than to send them back to them.
Sure. And there are those cases that are certainly, you know, going to tertiary care. But just in general, do you feel that your physician that you collaborate with has something extra to offer on the basis of his or her training or experience that you guys don't have?
I feel that my physician is certainly a great asset to me, and that they're always there for me, and that I can rely on them if I have any issues.
That's exactly what I asked. I mean, do you feel like the physician offers, you know, greater depth and breadth of experience and training that you can rely on in cases that you're unsure?
Well, I do believe that a physician is educated different than I am, and I do believe that they have--
In what way? I mean, what's your perception of how their education is different from you? I mean, I hope you don't mind us having this little conversation.
No.
Because I think it goes directly to the issues we're talking about.
No. I think that when I collaborate with a physician, that physician has been with me for a month. They know what my capabilities are.
But I'm talking about training now. I mean, how do you perceive the training that your doctor has had and what you have had? Is it on a par, or has it been, or has it been more? Or what do you--
It's been different. I got a diploma from Martin's Hospital in 1973. I went to Washington University School of Medicine to become a psychiatric nurse practitioner. I went to Maryville and got a bachelor's degree. I went to Mizzou and got a family and geriatric NP, along with a Masters of Science. And I went to St. Louis University to get my doctorate of nursing practice. So, I've had a lot of education. So, to compare year to year, my education is different. I'm a nurse practitioner. They're a physician. But I have lots of education and lots of clinical experience. I've been a nurse since 1973.
So, in your particular case, maybe you feel that the doctor's presence or his availability is not really all that important? I mean, it sounds as though you're pretty well qualified to take care of it on your own.
Well, I have a collaborative arrangement in order to assist me, and we have a working relationship, and I don't see any issues.
Okay. Frager, thank you.
Any further? I'm curious, you two ladies, where do you practice at?
I practice in orthopedics in Baptist, Missouri, which is northern Jefferson County.
Thank you.
I practice in southeast Missouri. I'm working for the University of Missouri in Columbia.
Thank you. Any other questions for these witnesses? Representative Crackie?
Good call, Mr. Chairman.
See?
I have two questions. First of all, where is the mileage distance in this bill?
It's a takeout. It's been--
Oh, I thought they were talking about it. That's where I was confused. I didn't see it, and I thought they said that was going to be the operation.
On page two, line 40, geographic proximity officer.
The mileage is defined in rules.
Okay.
And rules is what we were trying to make known there because of the rules affecting access.
So, that could be taken out then?
Yes.
But it's not necessarily would be.
Well, it is in this bill on line 40. It says, "Maintain geographic proximity." And we're taking that particular phrase out. The 50-mile is what is in the rules, but it would have to be a geographic proximity if that wasn't taken out.
When you have-- When you have your collaborating physician, sometimes when you diagnose someone, I guess there's certain specific doctors that could probably, I'm sure your collaborative doctor would maybe refer that to another doctor, correct?
Right.
And I mean, that's what you would do.
Absolutely.
I mean, maybe your doctor might not be actually qualified in whatever this illness might be so that you say, well, I think you should see so-and-so doctor instead.
Right. If a person has a particular problem that is significant, they probably need to go to whatever specialty is for that person. So I have relationships with different specialists in the area and I can call them up and confer with them as well as my collaborating physician. It doesn't limit me to ask specialty people if they would accept a patient or explain to them what's going on.
So you would send the patient to the collaborative doctor, the collaborative doctor would say, well, I think you need to see specialists when you originally could have actually done that thing.
Yeah, myself.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Representative Nichols?
To express a concern. I understand what you're saying, but when I read this bill, line eighty-nine through ninety-two, it starts off with, "All rules jointly promulgated" and it ends with, "shall be null and void." It doesn't really spell out what you're trying to get rid of in the bill, does it?
The rules are what were on the chart that Patty explained on here.
She said some.
Some of them are not in rules. Right. So the collaborative, the collaborative practice agreement would remain, but rules like the fifty mile rule, the one, the patients being referred back to a collaborating physician could change, the physician being examined two weeks after being treated could change, the review of a percentage of charts. Say that down electorally. Say that in this bill.
Or does it just say, "all rules shall be null and void"?
That's the ones that are printed now, but they have to be under rules. I'm sure there would be new rules, not the old ones.
I guess I'm not following. Where are the new rules?
That would be up to the agents.
Board of Health, thank you.
Okay, so they're not listed in the bill.
And they were never legislated. They were rules that were promulgated between the Board of Healing Arts and the Board of Nursing. They are not legislated. There are rules that were written administratively and they have created a burden of access to patients in rural areas particularly, well, actually in the whole state. I mean, we have one hundred and fourteen counties and one hundred and nine of them are health professional shortage areas. We really need to look at how we can provide care.
I guess if you're asking me to vote on this, I would like to see it written out as to exactly, you know, what you're talking about, what rules you're talking about. Thank you.
Any other questions for this witness? Thank you. I'd like to remind the witnesses to fill out a witness form for us. Everybody's testifying today. Representative Rowland, how many witnesses do you have?
I think we've got four more. Yeah, I think there's four more.
Four more, okay. How many do speak in opposition to this bill? I'm going to ask the testifying witnesses to keep your testimony to three minutes. That way that allows questions back. We're also going to proceed. I'm going to give about another ten minutes to those in support of the bill and then we will take testimony in opposition. We just still have another bill to hear after this today. So go ahead and proceed.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, my name is David Overfelt and I am the president of the Missouri Retailers Association. We support this measure because a number of our companies are opening clinics surrounding the state and they're not coming into Missouri because of the barriers created in the regulations, the regulatory body at this current moment. We are more than willing to work with the sponsor, the committee to straighten out the questions and what is, was making it difficult for us to operate. But the fact of the matter is we are opening clinics all surrounding Missouri, Kansas border, Illinois, other words, other places. I have members that are only based in Missouri that have looked into opening clinics, but the current regulations make it too difficult.
Questions for this witness? Representative Frederick?
To inquire, and I'll try to read. Would it change your organization's opinion at all or just think for you a scenario? I've introduced a bill this year that would allow physicians who have graduated medical school, passed step one and step two of the boards but didn't match with a residency. There are lots of reasons for that if they're shooting to be a cardiologist or a radiologist or whatever. But to allow them to come to the state of Missouri and practice in a collaborative practice arrangement with a licensed physician instead of just sitting out and waiting to apply another year for the match. Now, those individuals would have had an undergraduate degree from medical school including two years of purely didactic work and two years of clinical work who have passed boards that are extremely difficult. So these are not dumb graduate positions, pass those forty things, but then would come back to Missouri to work in a collaborative arrangement. Would your organization be interested in employing individuals like that in such a situation as you've described in your plan?
I actually think that some of my members in the St. Louis region have looked at that and that might be potential as well.
Which is currently not legal. But I mean, if we made that legal, I mean, you guys would be interested in doing that because it would qualify people that would work in a collaborative agreement with them and would reduce barriers to care and all that.
Anything we could do to reduce barriers and be able to operate our clinics would be something we're looking at.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions for this witness? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. My name is John Barjay.
I'm here as a registered lobbyist for Walgreens and we are in support of House Bill fourteen I think what we're trying to do here, I think what the representative is trying to do is to look at some antiquated rules. Rules that, as somebody wiser than I said, were written before we even had BlackBerries. For a techno weirdo like me, that got the point across to me. So I think that there would be additional rules that would come forward on some of these areas now. And I certainly understand what you're saying, I wanted to see exactly the written word, but we are in support of the bill.
Are there, thank you. Are there any questions for this witness? No, thank you. We continue with your testimony in favor.
Good afternoon. My name is Louis Bollman. I am an M D family physician in Columbia and I have worked with advanced practice nurses during my entire training in just, but not in the last four years. So I have worked in lots of business studies with advanced practice nurses and I'm here to say that I think that increased access to advanced practice nurses would improve outcome, would improve access to healthcare and would fit well in our system and I can give a good idea.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else who, is there anyone who has any questions for this witness? Seeing none, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm Chris Leacy. I represent CBS Caremark and the only thing I'd like to add is we have some of the most restrictive rules in the nation that need to be cleared up. We're opening a lot of clinics in Kansas and when I went to the national meeting, they said, can't we do anything about Missouri? So this is a good start.
Representatives to inquire? Proceed.
Chris, can you answer their questions about, you know, in the bill it just says we're deleting all these rules, but this piece of paper, some are in there, some are not.
My best guess would be that the rules are promulgated by the Board of Nursing and Healing Arts because they specialize in it. In the legislature, we don't get down to the minutia and say specifically what it is, but I'd be happy to work with you on that. That would be my guess.
Well, I guess we need to just see some proof of what you're saying is accurate, you know? Here's, here's the document that says these are the rules that we're getting rid of. So we could say, yep, that's, that's right, that's what you're referencing and that's what it says and so, you know, it's a little bit.
Yeah, exactly. What we're trying to accomplish is we're not telling the Board of Healing Arts and the Board of Nursing, you know, how to do their job that specifically. And from what I hear from you is you'd like us to be more specific with it. So we hear what you're saying and we'll certainly be glad to look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Good afternoon. My name is Keith Williston. I, my wife and I own the birth center in Independence, Missouri. And kind of a meat to most of the stuff you've heard. And just to add that we've had three certified nurse midwives approach us in the last year and a half to two years saying they would like to come work for us. Two of them, their jobs, because I don't know if you know this, Kansas changed some of their rules on malpractice insurance and the physicians they were working with moved to Kansas and didn't take the nurse practitioner with them. And so these nurse practitioners are now out of a job and can't find a collaborating physician close enough. And I mean, we're in Jackson County, we're in Independence, Missouri, the Kansas City metro area. And one of the nurse practitioners that we would have liked to have been able to work with also looked into putting a clinic or a birth center up in St. Joseph, Missouri. And she'd been a twenty-year veteran with the Army, being a nurse practitioner with the Army. But because she couldn't find a collaborating physician within that radius, she ended up having to move to California. She still can't sell her family home, so she's paying rent in California and here. And frankly, we, we're also struggling with loss of business. We're shipping currently about a million dollars a year from Jackson County into Johnson County, Kansas, including a lot of Medicaid tax dollars because they have a birth center that has staff sufficient to meet those needs. So we really are hurting ourselves.
Thank you for your testimony. Yes, representative.
I don't know if this is for the witness but, or the sponsor. Oh, sorry.
You may proceed.
I'm looking at that section, eighty-nine to ninety-two, and it does say the rules prior to August of 2014 have new rules been implemented since August. And are you saying that you want to, you know?
I think those rules will have to be in place, but they'll have to come together as a group to formulate those rules.
You got a follow-up question?
So you're saying that there were no new rules created in August or going to be created, I'm sorry, in August? Okay.
May I inquire?
Proceed.
I guess, I'm hoping I may be able to clarify this a little bit and I may make it boggier than ever. But if I heard her correctly, one of the witnesses said you all were changing who you were going to be under. And because all of the current rules were written by the two joint entities, that's why those rules are going to be declared null and void. And under the new organization, they would then promulgate rules, new rules as of August of 2014.
I'm not sure that we're communicating absolutely clearly. So just to clarify, there are a certain set of regulations regarding the collaborative practice agreement that the Board of Healing Arts and the Board of Nursing have to jointly promulgate. In other words, they have to both agree. But the regulation of nurses is still entirely under the Board of Nursing. And so what this is doing is in effect saying, well, since the Board of Nursing is the body that is tasked by the legislature with regulating the midwives, we're going to go ahead and shift that burden entirely on the Board of Nursing, much like it is for every other profession that regulates itself.
Okay, so then, so basically what you're doing is throwing out those old rules and letting the Board of Nursing, then come back and rewrite new rules.
I think that might be a bit soft in the word. They will have to write new regulations.
Well, obviously, right.
As quickly as possible, well, you know, to replace these.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, representative?
To inquire?
Proceed.
Now I'm really confused.
I'm sorry about that.
Why don't you just go ahead and write the rules? I mean, why do we have to approve something that says, "shall be null and void"?
That's kind of the problem is they can't. It can't be done by the Board of Nursing by itself right now.
So we have to leave wide open country for you to go ahead and write rules or not write rules?
That's, that's kind of a bit of an overstatement. I mean, most professions that have a board that regulate them and that board writes their regulations. This is actually a very unique situation where one profession has to get the permission from another board before they can write the rules for that profession.
Okay, thank you.
Representative Frederick? To inquire? Proceed. Let me just give you a hypothetical and let me ask how this would work. I think there are some in the dental hygienist profession that would like to have a collaborative practice arrangement with their dentist. If that were to occur, should we have the dental hygienist write the rules that would govern their interaction with the dentist? Or should it be a joint venture between the dentist and the dental hygienist? And I think the parallel is the same here. I mean, there's a lot of overlap between giving birth in a nursing model and giving birth in a medical model. And I'm just curious why you wouldn't want the input and the benefit of experience of physicians who have had the training, not only medical school, but obstetrics and the high-risk, the enablement and all that? Why you wouldn't want the input of physicians to help with the collaborations?
Well, historically, the tighter the legislature and the regulatory agencies require collaborative practice agreements, the less collaboration there actually is between the professionals. I don't think any of the nurses here, I know none of the nurses I've ever worked with would ever say they would ignore the advice, the input, the evidence, the experience of the physicians. But you end up with the problem of having, well, it's like trying to agree to a contract and saying, we're going to agree to agree on this somewhere down the road. Well, what happens if one person decides not to agree? At some point, there's nobody with a final, we're going to have a say here. And that's, that's really where the trouble comes in is you've got now two people who have to agree to agree and it's very, very difficult to accomplish. In your hypothetical, I don't know enough about the difference between a dental hygienist and a dentist to know whether or not it's really an appropriate comparison because I don't know how much training dental hygienists have. So I don't really have a good way to answer that specific hypothetically. I would need the information.
Let's move on to another witness. Thank you.
Sure.
I'd like to keep the testimonies brief if we could as we move forward. I want to get to the opposition.
Thank you. My name is Emily Vanchenkov and I'm the deputy director at Missouri Kids First, more statewide organization to address and prevent child abuse. I also represent the state's fifteen child advocacy centers which provide services to children who have been sexually abused or seriously physically abused. Many child advocacy centers provide safe exams to children as their sexual assault forensic evaluations to assess for trace biological evidence after an assault or assess for residual trauma to a child's body. These services and most C A Ds are provided by nurse practitioners and are ideally performed by nurse practitioners. They are lower, it costs less money to employ a nurse practitioner than a physician and the business of assessing abused children is not very lucrative, as you can imagine that. And there are not very many people that really want to do this work. The Springfield Child Advocacy Center has an amazing nurse practitioner and her collaborative, the physician that she works with collaboratively is going to retire in a few years and they are very concerned about their ability to find another physician who is willing to collaborate with her. And potentially, if they're unable to do this, we will not be able to perform sexual, we will not be able to perform these important exams in Springfield. Telemedicine is a growing trend in the field of child abuse pediatrics. Oftentimes, it is best for nurse practitioners to collaborate with individuals who have a subspecialty in child abuse pediatrics and those individuals- in child abuse pediatrics. And those individuals are only really found in our cities. I, I want to say respectfully that I sometimes find the debate between nurses and doctors to be a little frustrating. And I say that very respectfully because I know there are good reasons for that. But the children of Missouri don't have time for these debates. We are spending so much time right here debating this that we're not taking important steps that we need to take forward. So I would just hope that in public policymaking, we, there's, these few things go through in ideal ways, so perhaps we could come to a compromise that would allow us to, to continue to provide this valuable service to children and to other Missourians who, who need greater access to care. Thank you.
For a brief request question? Okay, Representative Breder.
It's just a comment, really, and it is to, and I appreciate the tone and respectful nature, and I want to be the same way. But I think the reason that we do need to be deliberate, and really take a serious look at this, there are, there are many reasons. But one, there is a report on nurse practitioner liability that was done by a company that's provided 20 years of professional liability coverage for nurse practitioners. And on page seventy-one of their report, they indicate the total amount of settlements paid or malpractice cases, and they separate it out by the amount of supervision. And for nurse practitioners that were not supervised at all, the average total amount of settlement was $293,000. If the physician, physician was available as needed, it was $83,000. Partial supervision was $77,000, and under direct supervision was $4,790. There are serious reasons why we should look carefully at making changes in these collaborative practices. I'm not doing it just willy-nilly. And so I just want you to know, we're going to be going forward in the spirit of cooperation to do what's right for us.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next witness. And I'm going to ask that your testimony be brief. We do need to get to the opposition testimony.
Thank you, sir. I will be very brief. I would like to say good afternoon and thank you for having me. My name is Jean Covelo. I'm a certified registered nurse anesthetist. I work out of Kansas City. I'm here today on behalf of the Missouri Association of Nurse Anesthetists to support, to support these bills, both bills, this one as well. CRNA's are a little bit unusual. They are considered advanced practice registered nurses. However, they are not subjected to a collaborative practice agreement. Because we're not subjected to the collaborative practice agreement, we are a little different. But even still, we as an association, and I myself as a certified registered nurse anesthetist and advanced practice registered nurse, is very supportive of any bill that will allow for advanced practice registered nurses to practice to the full extent of their training and education. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions for this witness? Seeing none. Thank you for your time. Are there any, anyone else? I don't see one coming, so we're going to move on to witnesses to testify against the bill. If you are, if you still wish to testify on paper, you can leave your testimony in written form, in, in, fill out a witness form at the desk.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Knight K. Kaper. I am a family physician here in Jefferson City. And I'm testifying today on behalf of the nineteen-hundred members of the Missouri Academy of Family Physicians, and we are testifying in opposition to this bill. We really continue to support a very strong collaborative practice agreement, and we really want a team-based care that enhances and the role of nurse practitioners in our healthcare system. We're very concerned about pieces of this bill. There are pieces that we're okay with, but the proximity rule, which they're taking out on page two, around forty, and that will be, they want to have just electronic, that could mean that you could have a physician in Cape Girardeau being the supporting physician for someone in Maryville, a nurse practitioner. At the present time, if you have somebody that needs further evaluation, if that person is in Maryville and the doctor says, oh, I need, somebody more needs to see this, something else needs to happen, at this point, that person can then go to the next physician and see them if more is needed. In that situation, if you're in Maryville, the nurse practitioner, someone else is down in Cape Girardeau, the only option is that that person goes to the emergency room, which would be quite expensive. When they could just drive to see the doctor, we work people in all the time with our nurse practitioners when they think this needs something more, of more input from someone who has more training and more experience than we do. We're, we're, that proximity piece that we're quite concerned about. We're also concerned about what Representative Nichols has brought up, this blanket null and voiding of all prior, all prior things that have been decided up to August 28th, 2014. The things that have been decided on that have been decided between the Board of Healing Arts and the Board of Nursing with collaborative task forces that took a lot of time to work together, poring over, working together, coming up with the things that are in this rule, and somebody wants to just eliminate it all. And we don't have anything in place to do that. They want this to go back to then all rules will be made by the Board of Nursing. And at this point, there's no requirement that the Board of Nursing has nurse practitioners on it. They often do. But you might be making heading rules that are being made up with nobody who's actually being a provider of care as a nurse practitioner, doctor. And right now, that has been worked on a couple of different task forces, many hours of working together to do that. The piece that we're okay with, we think the electronic medical records, that's where things are going with now. We're, we're really not opposing that provision of seeing, being able to sign something off electronically. I mean, we're even doing that when we're in the same building, across the way, ten miles away, twenty miles away. We don't really have opposition to that. But the other pieces, we're like, wow, this is just kind of throwing the baby out with the bathwater, just some kind of blanket elimination of things that people poured their a lot of effort into developing over the last several years. So, that's kind of where we're at. Sorry, I tried to make it quick.
Okay. Representative Franklin.
I'm Mr. Karen Tinquire.
Proceed.
Um, you know, you kind of sparked my curiosity with the geographic and the technology. I think technology needs to move forward with the, the knowledge that physicians have, the training that they receive has produced such, such rigor in them that when they have the case information given to them, they immediately go into a hypothesis about what could or could not be wrong, where do we need to go from here. So I guess the curiosity in the proximity is, so is the, is a collaborative physician restricted to being a physician in practices within the state of Missouri?
Currently, yes. As far as I'm concerned, I don't think you could be a collaborative physician in Arkansas.
Or another country, even?
Right. No, that I, that I'm, I'm talking what I think is true. I don't know that that's true, but I think.
But if new rules are promulgated, did that change, that a doctor in India could review the case in Missouri and?
I don't think that you could bill for a, I don't, a doctor from another country. I think that that would be.
But the nurse practitioner is billing within the system in Missouri?
Yeah. I, I don't think you could have a doctor from another country as your collaborative physician.
Thank you. You just need to think about technology, the uses of that, how fast it moves forward. Even in another state, maybe, because Medicaid does transfer across the nation. Thanks so much.
You, Representative Breder.
To inquire.
Proceed.
Do you think that it would be helpful for us to have a requirement that a collaborative physician see a patient on a more timely basis than one of the previous witnesses testified to, that they couldn't get an appointment for two weeks with a collaborating physician? I mean, should we, should we require a closer collaborative arrangement and more commitment from the physician that if the nurse practitioner, or for that matter, the VA calls in and says, I, this patient really needs an appointment, should we consider requiring that if you're going to collaborate with a nurse practitioner, you accommodate it faster than just what your normal schedule will allow?
I, I think that that would be reasonable. I, I know that with our nurse practitioners in our office, that it's similar to, I know, hospital follow-up. It doesn't matter if you have a full schedule. If that person needs to be seen, you find a place for them.
And most physicians are doing that now, aren't they?
Yeah.
So to make your requirement, we just catch those few that apparently that's happening to the previous, the witness who said that.
Right. And, and, and most importantly is that's when that's a new patient that's never been seen, uh, by the nurse practitioner even, new to them.
Representative Lance.
To inquire.
Proceed.
I, this makes it fourth year in a row that I've made this, these same comments and same inquiries. I represent a district that has over nine hundred square miles, the largest town in that district, is nineteen hundred people. We don't have any primary physicians. Quite honestly, I don't think there's any primary physicians being graduated. I don't think there are any entering med school now because of the costs involved in getting that education and the, the money that they get returned. As in all rural areas, we have many, many elderly people. As most everyone knows, the elderly don't do a real good job of getting out and driving. So if we don't have some type of collaborative practice or some type of nurse practitioner clinics, those people aren't going to get medical care, just flatly. They won't drive the fifty miles to Joplin or sixty miles to, to Carthage or the hundred and some miles to Springfield to get medical care. I'd just love to see somebody come up with a way to get this done. Like I said, this makes it fourth year of, I've had the same comments and listened to the same arguments. But if there's a, if there's a way to come up with a collaboration, then let's do it.
Was that a question, or did you just want?
It's more of a statement.
Okay. I didn't know if I was supposed to respond to that.
Would you, would you respond, would you? Can you respond?
Well, I, I think that there are, the situations that you're in are, are more unusual, I mean, than the state of Missouri. There are a lot of places where the access is closer, but we need more family physicians, and we need more nurse practitioners, we need more people in general. I mean, a lot of those more rural areas have trouble getting nurse practitioners there just as well as they do as family physicians. I mean, I would encourage there'd be incentives for people to practice in those areas, loan, you know, repayment, things like that. Similar to just getting people into primary care, period, because a lot of the students now are coming out with so much debt that they want to go into non-primary care specialties so that they can pay back that debt. And they're going into specialty areas a lot of times. But I think that we all need to do things to encourage access to care by a group of people, you know, all to coming together to provide that.
Thank you. Thank you for responding.
Okay.
Are there any further questions? Seeing none. Thank you for your testimony. We'll now hear another witness.
Good afternoon. I'm Brian Bolz, and I represent the Missouri Association of Osteopathic Physicians and Surgeons. And I, I should have some testimony that I wrote to save a little bit of time, a letter. If you don't have that, we can get that to you. But I wanted to comment on a few things that, that have come up. And one thing that seems to be missing, and hasn't come up, is last year, Senate Bill 330 passed, and that, that bill actually waives the geographic proximity clause if telemedicine is used. And I spent Sunday evening working with Board of Healing Arts on a phone call. There were nurses, people in the nursing board on there promulgating rules for that law. That law has not even had a, a chance to go into effect yet, and we're already talking about getting rid of the wave and waiting for the laws. Okay? I would suggest that be prudent to wait and see how that works. Secondly, why do we jointly promulgate the rules in this situation? Why don't we give it all to the nursing board? There are physicians involved. And the physicians are involved, they have, they're, they have to be involved in the rulemaking. I would say access to care, which has been thrown out several times, would diminish if this passed, because I'm going to have a hard time convincing my members to participate in a collaborative agreement under another board's rules. It just isn't going to happen. And I have some docs here today who can testify to that as well. So I think what I say is true. There was a comment made about, you know, diagnosing somebody with diabetes and them having to wait for two weeks to see, to see a, a doctor. And I, I think the phrase was have to wait two weeks just to see a doctor. I don't know about you, I don't have diabetes, but if I'm diagnosed with it, I want to see a doctor. I want to see a doctor. And then one last thing, and I'll let some other witnesses come up. You know, Walgreens, CBS, the retailers that want to move into the state, they are not concerned about our patients, our, our citizens' health, the minorities. I mean, any place where you can get, you know, your flu shot, a six-pack of cigarettes is not concerned about our healthcare. They're concerned about one thing, and that's money. I'd be saying, I'd be supporting this bill to oppose them. But the fact is, they're not concerned about our citizens. You all are concerned about our citizens. I urge you to, to oppose this bill as we do. That's all I have. Are there any questions?
Representative Carr. Proceed.
A bold statement to say that those people don't care about people's welfare or their getting medication. When I live in a small community where on a Saturday night, you go to the ER, at midnight, you get kicked out, there's one place to get a, a prescription, one. They may have one person come in all night. They bring jobs to the community, they do things like that. So.
Is that, is that a question?
No, no, I, I can finish, and I'll get to my question. However, I mean, I, I see your point to a certain extent, but what does the person do that is, let's say, diagnosed as diabetic, lives in the backwoods southern part of Missouri, doesn't have a vehicle that can take him to a doctor, but can make it to that clinic ten miles away, that has really no transport to Springfield, Missouri, Ralla, or that thing? What do they do?
Well, currently, they, they have access to, I would assume you're talking about a nurse practitioner in a collaborative agreement with a physician.
But then they have to wait two weeks. You said to see a doctor, right?
Well, that's what they claim. That's, that's what some previous witnesses claimed. If they're using telemedicine, they might be able to do it right then. And that's what last year's law allows. So you could have, you could have a physician collaborating with somebody from St. Joe, collaborating with somebody in, in Poplar Bluff, using telemedicine, and that geographic proximity requirement doesn't, it's waived. It's already waived.
Representative Carpenter.
Uh, to inquire.
Proceed.
You posed the question, if, you know, if you were diagnosed with diabetes, wouldn't you want to see a doctor? I think it was kind of a rhetorical question, but I just thought, you know, after hearing the two ladies' testimony earlier from the University of Missouri, Southeast Missouri, who seems to have degrees from every university in the state, and a lot of thirty years, plus years of experience, I just thought I'd answer your question and then say I would be more than, more than happy to see her, maybe even before than I would see some of the doctors on this committee or, or elsewhere in the state. So, I just wanted to say I have, I have a lot of faith in her.
Okay, thanks for the comment. Do we have any further questions for this witness? Seeing none. Thank you for the testimony. Seeing none, thank you for the testimony.
Good afternoon, Chairman Rolson, committee members. I'm Dr. James Wolf. I'm a retired otolaryngologist from Springfield, Missouri. I'm also president of the Missouri State Medical Association. And as previous witnesses have said, parts of this bill we can support. We can support the electronic communication review as long as it's well-defined. But this bill doesn't do that. It just says effective electronic communication. As previously noted by multiple witnesses, this does void, and it does completely void all rules governing nurse practitioners and physicians that are in a collaborative practice Now, in contrast to what the writers of this bill would like, I would submit to you that it would be more appropriate if we're going to have a single board writing the rules for someone that's acting as a physician, that that be done by the Board of Healing Arts. After all, they already review and make rules for the audiologists, the speech pathologists, the anesthetic assistants, just to name a few. So adding nurse practitioners, although they started out as a nurse, that's not what they're working as now, they will tell you that they can diagnose and they can treat just as well as any physician. And I would submit to you that if it looks like a duck, if it quacks like a duck, walks like a duck, it's a duck. With regards to the proximity rule, a previous witness pointed out that yes, you don't have to be any more close. I would go so far as to say a physician could be in Haytai, Missouri, down in the Boot Hill, and could be monitoring someone up in St. Charles. Now, he's not going to have any community feedback on how that individual is performing. All he's going to have is the records. And he's not even going to have to look at all the records, he's only going to have to look at a small percentage of them. And most of them will probably be selected by that individual. So he's going to be looking at what that physician or that individual wants him to look at. I would submit to you that that's not the greatest oversight that we would want for patients in Missouri. Now, there is an unexpected consequence of this bill that nobody's addressed, and I'd like to bring to your attention. It would encourage large healthcare systems to extend their referral base by sending nurse practitioners beyond their usual referral areas, thereby duplicating services. But what it would do is those nurse practitioners would say, "Ah, you now have diabetes. You need to see one of our endocrinologists. The physicians here locally just can't handle your case, it's too complicated. You need to go down the road." And as a consequence, the octopus that we see encompassing all of Missouri by these large healthcare systems will just be completely engulfing our entire geographic area. And you will be facilitating it, although you didn't really want to, by the passage of this bill. And I agree, we haven't given the telehealth bill a bit of a chance. And I would, I would concur that we need to at least give it a chance before we put that in the dumpster. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you for your testimony. Any questions? Okay, Representative.
Thank you for your testimony, that's well. You know, I have found my mind exactly what you just mentioned last, you made many good points, but the concept of a large tertiary care facility who is feeling the heat now because they have been carved out of these narrow panels, and that really their physicians and their facilities are not going to be as busy because they don't have as many patients now, are going to be looking to expand in areas, and I doubt that they'll go to areas where it's a high Medicaid population, they're going to go to areas where there are more affluent insured patients, and they will duplicate services. This was a concern of mine as well, that we would be facilitating, basically, the support of the local hospital. Local hospitals are just so important to our communities. And this would undermine the local hospital, because there would be no limit really, geographic or otherwise, on how many clinics they could put in these places, to have those patients referred back to the, to the tertiary care centers. So I think we should think long and hard before we upset the current system that we have. And I would also, maybe at another time, the proposal that I brought forward earlier about having physicians that don't manage come back and work in a collaborative agreement, and make them go to rural areas, that's another alternative to what we're considering here. I appreciate your testimony.
Any other questions for this witness? First, I want to, before you inquire, I want to make, let everyone know that we probably are not going to be getting the House Bill 1491, so if there's anyone here that's waiting to testify on that bill, I do apologize, I do want to give these issues as thorough testimonies we possibly can. And so, and so we will likely, we may, we may hear some testimony, but we, what I can guarantee is that we will be back hearing the rest of the testimony on 1491 next week. So we'll try to hear some testimony, but I, what we will, I assure you, that we will be hearing completed testimony next week. Okay? Okay. Representative Swan.
Mr. Chair, may I offer a point of clarification regarding last year's bill?
Thank you. We welcome that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was House Bill 315, it was Representative Roland's bill, that my telehealth bill language was added on as an amendment to the Senate. It is a six, has a six-year sunset, and allows the use of telehealth by advanced practice nurses in rural areas designated as health professional shortage areas. So the patient and the APRN would be located in a health professional shortage area, meaning a rural area of need in the state of Missouri. The collaborative physician then could be in another location. And that particular bill waives the current mileage requirement. So just a point of clarification on last year's language. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Are there any further questions for this witness? Representative Liptonaker.
Yeah, I just have a small question.
You may proceed.
Thank you. I'm sorry. You were just saying that if a nurse practitioner had something going on with like the hospitals, you know, these certain hospitals that they would be involved in. You know, I had a meeting with St. Francis Hospital in Cape Girardeau County not too long ago, and the director of that hospital was telling me that they now own 70% of the doctors in Cape Girardeau County. That's the exact same thing of what you just blamed the nurses for doing, or that they might do. I mean, there's really no difference. If there is, please inform me, because I don't see a difference.
I'm not, and I'm not sure that's what he said. I think that's, that's a natural, that's happening in general. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that, that may be true, that hospitals are buying up doctors' practices, and I understand why, why that's happening. But, I mean, I just don't, I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify that if a nurse were to recommend a patient to a certain hospital, the doctors are already there, so that's my question.
My point was that your increase, your likelihood going to increase the competition without, in, as Representative Frederick said, in areas that are already over-served. And that was my point, that we won't be addressing the underserved areas. We will be increasing competition in the already served areas, because the tertiary facilities such as Barnes, or the University of Missouri, as they already are, are extending their influence farther and farther. Now, if you want a pyramid system, this is going to produce a pyramid system more rapidly. I see no other way.
I, I don't know, that didn't really answer my question. I just think that, you know, the doctors are already joining the hospitals, and like I said, I understand why they're joining the hospitals. And, you know, Barnes and some of the other hospitals, Mercy, have already gone into many of the rural areas, and are already there providing services within the rural hospital setting. So I, I don't know, maybe I'm looking at apples and oranges, but it sounds like apples and apples to me. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be confrontational or anything, I'm just asking a simple question.
I'm just pointing out that the process that is already occurring naturally will be accentuated. That's all I'm pointing out.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
I'm Kevin Scalzio, I'm a ophthalmologist in Lees, Missouri. I'll be very brief, I just had two troubling aspects of the bill I wanted to point out. A lot of this has been covered, and I think I might actually have an answer for Brett Liptonaker's question. Number one, the geographic removal of proximity. I think what I see in this bill are contradictions, is in essence, you're freeing up the APRNs to function more as physicians, less oversight, no geographic proximity. And I think it was stated earlier, in earlier testimony, about our scope of practices are the same, we should be able to do the same things, we should be able to be unyoked, if you will. I know that this bill is not specifically a scope of practice bill, however, that destroys the collaborative team approach by taking away that proximity. On the other hand, as was pointed out earlier, the, you're changing the oversight. So you're going to essentially have folks function more as physicians, now they're going to be regulated by the Board of Nursing solely and completely. And you're doing away with any regulation of the typical physician regulating body, the Board of Healing Arts. And then to echo the doctor's sentiments about kind of the unintended consequences, what you're going to have are, under this model as it currently is in this bill, you're going to have corporatization of medicine accelerate. And the difference that's going on here is that the nurse practitioners will still be locked under this language, under a collaborative practice agreement, has to be done with a physician. Who controls the physicians? Large companies, be it a health system, or Walgreens, or a CVS. They are going to hold the power over nurse practitioners. They're going to be holding those keys, if you will, to be setting up collaborative practice agreements. Because what, the difference here is if you're going to have nurse practitioners function solely and independently, then they may be able to choose whether or not they're going to enter a, work for a health system, or a CVS, or a Walgreens. But as long as the language of this bill holds it, that they still have a collaborative practice agreement, then they're going to have to find a doctor to sign up, that doctor may could be very far away, could be in St. Louis. But most of the doctors in this state now are working, are employed physicians. That's, that's where it's going, and so Dr. Rolson, it's going to speed up that process. Any questions?
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thanks for your time.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Fred Keel, and I'm a living dinosaur, I see. I'm in independent family practice in Maysville, Missouri. I started there in 1978, and under National Health Service Corps, which was to get physicians into rural areas to serve the underserved, and I stayed there and my practice has grown, not because we became wealthy, because of Renosar County and Tursa movement, people move out. And I've employed a nurse practitioner since 1982, and I've had a wonderful relationship with them in a collaborative fashion. We've increased access to care, and, and it's been a good, it's been, it's been a good relationship, and we work hard to get people in. And just waiting two weeks, I've never heard of that, and I would agree with the earlier witness, physician, no, they'll be seen that day or the next day. And, and we have, we welcome the collaboration with the advanced practice nurses that we've had, they've been excellent. And, and I would be cautious when you just abolish something, like abolish all the rules. I remember, been in practice a while, when the rules initially were promulgated, it took several years to get them all. And I would hate to see a vacuum, when the boards are thinking about it, working about it, figuring out what's going to work best for the people of Missouri. When you get a vacuum, usually weeds grow. You don't get good grass, good trees, just barren land. And I've been also doing safe exams, I was on the founding member, I was founding on the advisory council of the Safe Network, and I value the nurse practitioners and the nurse practitioners down in Springfield. She is also on the advisory council. She's a wonderful woman and excellent nurse practitioner. And, you know, just, I'm kind of in, in the same boat we are all in, to take care of people in underserved areas. And, and I don't see corporate America as in CBS going to Unionville, Missouri. They're not going to go to Unionville or Mount Henry, towns of 1,000 people. There's a little word, there's lots of doctors already. Although, I'm thrilled to death, there is a Walmart in Cameron, Missouri, and I can get a prescription filled on a building ER Saturday evening, and I got it, somebody's got to get some medicine. So to speak to, I think those representative of Rhodes, I'm glad for that service. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions for this witness? This is Representative Frederick.
Inquire. Proceed. Would you, thank you very much for giving your testimony. Would you say that this is basically working pretty well the way it is now?
Yes, I think basically it's working very well. Everything can use improvement, and being smoother, and electronic records that I understand would help that.
Would it concern you that if the rules were rewritten, and they were just written by the nursing board, as a collaborating physician, when the medical Board of Healing Arts didn't have any say-so in what the content of the collaboration agreement was, would it give you any pause or hesitancy? Or do you feel like it's better that because there's a doctor involved and there's a nurse involved, that you have both boards involved?
I think having both boards involved is in the same spirit as a collaborating relationship. We have a team approach, and, and for the farmers, you get hybrid bigger. You get two similar, then you get a stronger end product.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, thanks for your testimony.
My name's Stephen Brusco, I'm a family practice physician in northwest Missouri. We have a independent practice in a rural community, and then we have like two clinics up there, one of them is in St. George, it's a bigger town, I mean, it's not, that's a small town by any means, but nonetheless.
Speaker.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
And I, you know, I'm, I'm in support of nurse practitioners and advanced practice nurses. We have, I've collaborated with them since I got out of residency. And I still, we still have, we have two physicians and three nurse practitioners within our practices currently, and I think we have a very good relationship in the way that we practice. You know, the, the purpose of the bill that is related to access to care and eliminating this geographic proximity, I mean, as has been stated already, the telemed bill last year essentially already addressed that. So that part of this is essentially somewhat pointless. And the rest of the bill, it's a little disheartening to me, that we're talking about a collaborative practice agreement, and, you know, and here we are, the two people collaborating, if they're butting heads about it. I mean, it just seems kind of silly to me that that's the way this works. I mean, we really ought to, I mean, if we, if there are parts of the collaborative practice agreement that we need to change, then our professional organizations really ought to come together and make those changes, and, you know, or to bring to you guys the bills to make those changes. It's just disheartening to me that we aren't doing that. Thirdly, if you essentially strip out the parts of the collaborative practice agreement that that is talked about in this bill, I don't know that very many physicians would collaborate, because you essentially are opening up an awful lot of liability to us. And, you know, and then you basically go down the path of saying, "Okay, fine, now the docs are going to collaborate with us. We've got to come in and practitioners so we can actually survive." Well, you know, now you are opening yourselves up to a terrific amount of liability that you currently are covered by us. So there are parts of this that just makes me feel like we're shooting ourselves in the foot. And we really could, I just think we should collaborate together to do this. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for this, any questions for this, please? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, David Jackson, registered lobbyist, on behalf of the Missouri Dermatological Society Association, as well as the Missouri Society of Anesthesiologists. And I want to thank Representative Roland, as well as the chairman of the committee, for having this discussion today. I think as we talk about technology today, it's probably safe to say that there's probably some tweets out there already that shots have been fired in the room, and I think in some things, everybody on both sides of this issue probably don't agree with. I don't think it's necessarily fair to claim that, you know, every nurse wants to go be a doctor, call themselves a doctor, and practice independently, and without any physician oversight or collaboration. Just like, I don't think it's fair to say that physicians don't want to review charts and don't want to work in a team-based atmosphere and increase access to care. I think everybody here can sympathize with, whether you live in a rural area or urban area, that you want to do whatever you can to try to get the best providers out there and the best access, but make sure that we don't sacrifice patient safety for access. And so, I think, taking it back to that, what we really want to try to do is look at this and decide whether this bill really does increase the access we're looking for. What are actually the rules that are burdensome, that need to be repealed, that are archaic? And will they work? There's been a lot of talk about collaborative practice, and I think some of the past testimony has pointed this out a little bit, that you don't hear a lot of the stories where collaborative practice models do work. You don't hear necessarily the story that, you know, we hear from our members, when this debate started, and some members would call and say, "Let me tell you about the time that my nurse practitioner went and saw a patient, and took down their symptoms, and came to me with what they felt the diagnosis was. We went back and saw the patient together, and figured out the best course of action from there." And that's the story you don't necessarily hear, and where this is really working. The majority of our members work in the same facility as the nurse practitioner or PA they're working with. And so before we move forward with this, I would suggest that the committee go back to your district and see how many nurse practitioners are in your district that are practicing a collaborative practice model, that would expand the practice or go out into a more rural area, or see more patients under this model. I can tell you that in regards to the geographic proximity, the reason that our physicians like that is because they want to be close to the patients that they're supervising. Just like you want to see the patients and go back to your district and get to know the constituents you represent, you don't necessarily just want to take a vote on an iPad from your district, you want to come, you know, go back to your district and travel back and forth and be a part of something. And that's exactly how our members feel with our patients. And so if this model were to advance, the physician participation is a key element. Because I asked the committee to consider, if you have physicians across the state saying they don't feel comfortable supervising patients from a distance, it's something we should consider. When we put these laws in place, patients don't know. Patients don't know what they're going in towards. Patients shouldn't ever have that burden of trying to figure out what the qualifications are, or where they can find the next course of action. They trust that committees like this have vetted this out and put together the best plan that's safest for patients across the state. In regards to the burdensome rules and regulations that are archaic and outdated, I will point out that, I remember these going through and worked on them, and the last round of these, they're vetted through both the legislature and the administrative rules process. The reason that we are combining the Board of Healing Arts and the Board of Nursing is because we're dealing with a lot of procedures that center around the practice of medicine and the practice of nursing. So it makes sense to collaborate and work together on some of these procedures. And I encourage you to look at list of those procedures before we vote on this. And you may, through that, understand why we are so adamant that we work together in that making progress.
Jackson, we have very limited time, we have a meeting starts at 2:00 after this.
Thank you.
Give a great testimony. I'll ask the committee if they have questions for Mr. Jackson. He's in the building often, and you can probably find him. Do you have a, thank you, Mr. Jackson. Do you have a quick comment? I'll give you 20 seconds, at the very best.
I'm Dr. Lisa Vineyard, I practice in Maesville, Missouri also, and I actually went back and practiced with my dad. My issue, besides what have already been said, which I agree with, is that if we completely disregard all of the rules that have been made up until this point, and only make them with the nursing board, and then the physician board has to make their own rules, I'm worried that those are going to work against each other, just as we're talking in this testimony, kind of a tit for tat, well, if you're going to do this, we're going to do this. And then that would even more degrade the collaborative practice agreement that we already have.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your testimony. I apologize, we cannot take any questions, this committee hearing is adjourned. We appreciate everyone coming and testifying. Next week we will hear the other bill. And for anyone who wants to see all of this, we've been livestreaming these committees, these committee hearings, and those are available on the internet. See my office if you want, or else I'll have to see this.